of March and let's get the let's get the show on the road.
All right.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call, Councilmember Delory.
President.
Councilmember Mandell. Councilmember Tressin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
President.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Deputy Corporation Counsel, Richard Barrios. So now a salute to the flag.
All right, looks like Councilman Delory has a flag tonight, so why don't you lead us in the pledge?
Okay, President Bendo, thank you. Hands over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, before we get started, just want to announce items six and seven have been taken off the calendar.
Okay, so why don't we get going with the city manager's report?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Um, I am the first person is Robert Spelzino, the attorney is going to give us an update.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. I don't know if you can hear or see me?
We can hear you, we don't see ya.
Okay. I don't know if there's something I can do about that, but uh.
Yeah, I just moved you up to the panel so you can turn your camera on.
Okay.
There he is.
There you go.
So, um, uh, Ms. Gaden hasn't asked me what to report on, but I'm guessing you all know that I'm going to report on the Haberman situation. So, uh, we have had a conference with the court. There is one outstanding issue that has to be resolved before a judgment will be entered, and that is the amount of the credit to which the city is entitled as a result of Haberman's settlement with Xander. If you recall, Xander is the building next door, and around the same time that folks from Xander asked the zoning board of appeals to revoke the, uh, the permit that was granted to Haberman, uh, they also commenced an action to, uh, stop the, the building that resulted in an injunction from 2003 to 2010. So they are liable for damages during that period. They settled with, um, Haberman immediately before trial for $23 million, and the city is entitled to, uh, a significant credit for that amount. The court has scheduled the hearing for April 7th on that issue. We are in conversations with the attorneys for the Habermans about how to resolve that, and hopefully we will reach a resolution before the hearing.
Okay. Got any questions for any of the council members for Bob?
Thank you for the update.
Yep, we appreciate that. All right, well, keep us posted, Bob. Thanks, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening, thank you. Uh, my next speaker is Joe Lupo from Corporation Counsel. He's going to be talking about, you know, we've been trying to, um, sell the garage, the update on the selling of the garage.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so as Donna said, um, the city's planning to sell the central garage located on the Long Beach Boulevard, um, and we're currently in the process of preparing an RFP for that sale. Um, the central garage is used to maintain the fleet of city vehicles, and to that effect, various pollutants such as gas, oil, and other chemicals are stored there. Over the years, it's possible that those pollutants either leaked, spilled, um, et cetera, and could have potentially contaminated the soil beneath and around the garage. Now, this is a concern for the city because even if we attempted to sell the building as is and had a buyer agree to purchase the building as is, the city would still be liable for any, uh, liable, excuse me, for any contamination under the environmental law. So, in essence, we can't contract away our liability. So in order to insulate the city from any potential, you know, exorbitant costs of environmental cleanup, we're, uh, we reached out to Gallagher Insurance Company to inquire about obtaining, um, contamination cleanup, um, insurance coverage. But now in order to obtain a realistic quote for such a policy, it is, you know, it's a process. So according to the people at Gallagher, if the potential buyer is not going to demolish the existing building, then we may only need to provide what they call a phase one survey of the property, which is in essence, a complete history of the garage, its various uses, and the amount and duration of any chemicals used there and stored there. Alternatively, which is probably more likely, um, of an outcome, if the potential buyer, you know, wants to demolish the existing building, then with the insurance provider explains us, um, that the likelihood of contamination issues and the discovery of such issues is much more prevalent, prevalent. Um, in addition to the phase one survey, we would then also need to provide the insurance company with a phase two subsurface sample report, which is essentially an investigation and testing of the soil to identify and measure the severity of any potential contamination. Thereafter, once we were able to get all that information to the insurance company, the underwriters would then be able to provide us with, you know, an insurance quote. But at this point, you know, we're taking it one step at a time, so we're gathering all the information to complete the phase one survey, and then once we get that to the insurance company, we're going to have another meeting to see what our next steps are.
Okay.
Hey, Joseph, um, thank you for that update. Um, I have a two-part question.
Sure.
Um, for those of us who are not experts in insurance, my first question is, are we currently self-insured for this property?
Um, no, we actually do have a policy, um, through Gallagher for this property.
Okay.
Um, a review of the policy does not cover us for, um, any kind of, uh, contamination cleanup. It's actually a specific exclusion based on the current policy.
Okay, and then my second question is, can we do an, uh, an RFP for other insurers to pitch this?
There's absolutely no reason why we cannot. Um, the only reason why we reached out to Gallagher is just because we have a, uh, a pretty good working relationship with Gallagher. So we wanted to know everything that we would need to get a quote. Um, you know, if we reached out or set up an RFP and, you know, let's say we selected somebody else, it would just kind of prolong the, um, prolong, you know, us knowing what we're looking at. So at this point, we're not obligated to go with Gallagher, we're just getting, just getting a quote.
Um, sounds like a responsible process, so thank you again for the update.
Yes, ma'am, we're very lucky.
Any other questions from the council members? All right, thanks, Joe, appreciate that.
You got it. Next update is from Mr. Barrios, Deputy Corp Counsel.
Good evening, members of the council, city manager. Um, I've been asked to update the council, I guess, on a recent zoning board hearing. There was, uh, at the zoning board meeting over on February 25th, which was a pretty long one, it was about a five-hour meeting. The board heard applications on, uh, six separate parcels of interest specifically in the North Park area on East Pine Street. Um, the applications were for a mix of, um, area and use variances. As far as area, from things on side yards to frontage, and on the use aspect of it, it was, uh, to convert one family homes into two. From, uh, from that, from that presentation, basically the presenters there included, uh, the applicant's managing agent, uh, Mr. Gallo, his attorney, Mr. Kelly, a representative from Habitat for Humanity, the Nassau County Chapter, um, and the architect as well. Uh, right now that hearing is complete. We anticipate the board voting on the matter at the next ZBA meeting this month. I checked the website, our YouTube channel, that zoning board hearing is up and available if anyone wants to see it. I can also cut and paste it on the, uh, I guess in the comment section here for everyone's reference if you need it. That's basically it.
And Rich, you said there was six parcels that they're looking to do this on?
Correct, yes. Um, by way of reference, and historically, I believe two of them were the subject of a previous application, uh, by the same, I believe, of the same applicant, and those were denied last year, so he reapplied with four new parcels, um, since the year had gone by. So you're not allowed to basically apply for a new variance until at least a year has passed. Um, so he's brought that application with all six parcels now. Uh, so the zoning board will be deliberating. Uh, we anticipate having a meeting with council to discuss, you know, the nuances of the case, the cases, and we should have a decision, um, this month.
Is this converting the, the, the existing buildings from one to two-family, or would these be demolition and new construction?
Uh, I believe some are already up, others are demo and knockdown. Um, some haven't even been built yet, they've already been knocked down, so there's kind of vacant parcels there, so it's a mixed bag.
Okay.
Um, Rich, there, thank you for the update again. Um, I think there, um, when I drove by East Pine Street, I saw at least two of the parcels are fully constructed, so therefore that means they do not have separate meters, they're currently constructed as one-family houses, is that correct?
Yes, I believe they are, yes.
So can we confirm that they don't have meters for two, a two-family house right now?
Um, I, I can ask, I guess, the building department to just take a check, you know which parcels they were?
I can get back to you tomorrow, but I saw two, two beautiful houses, um, with the Habitat for Humanity signs on East Pine that were zoned as one, my understanding is that they are currently one, one-family houses.
Right.
But I didn't, I don't know if there's meters, if there's meters for a two-family house, that, that seems a little counterintuitive if they already put the meters in for two-family when they don't have zoning for one-family.
We can certainly look into it, those may be the parcels that were previously applied for and denied, I'm not 100% sure, but if you give me a little more information, I can coordinate with the building department and we'll take a look.
Thank you.
Okay, so just, it's my understanding, our new, newly stood-up planning board is, um, uh, looking at the, updating the, the comprehensive plan. This all kind of ties together, uh, we got to be careful about doing one-offs, especially when we're, um, updating the comprehensive plan. It, it, it all needs to be a, a part of the package, so, uh, somehow we might also need to tie the planning board into this conversation, um, as, as well.
The planning board is involved in the conversation, that's why we brought it up tonight, to make sure that you all were aware of what was going on, because you have the North Park, I believe it's the North Park Association, the planning board, and, and there are a few others that are concerned about what's going on, so we decided that we would bring it forth tonight so that everybody would be on the same page and that we will keep everybody updated.
Right, it's, it's basically a gentrification versus affordable housing argument that, uh, this kind of creates. So, okay, we need to just, uh, keep tabs on this.
Um, Rich, Mike Delory, could you just explain use variance? If that, is that before the zoning board?
Right, so the, the, uh, the six parcels have kind of a mixed bag of applications, it's, uh, area and use variances. So an area variance is quite simply, um, you know, if you want to build a house or build a deck and it goes out to the property line, you have a certain frontage that you're allowed under the zoning code, so if you're seeking more than the code allows, you're asking for an area variance. Um, and there's a certain set of, uh, statutory factors that the zoning board has to consider, um, being the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment, uh, to the community or vice versa. Um, that's area. Use variances are a bit more involved, you're actually, um, Long Beach is composed of zoning districts or zoning areas, right, so certain areas are zoned for particular houses. Um, in this case, in these cases, the area is zoned for one-family housing, uh, single-family houses, so he's asking for, uh, a variance on that use. The burden on that's a, a, quite a bit tougher than an area variance and aren't as easily granted typically, as a general proposition, so, um, those are the distinctions between the two.
Because I recall back in, earlier in the year, and I could be wrong, that's why I'm bringing it up, is, does this correspond with anything that was presented in January?
I'm not 100% sure. I know, I know the applicant previously applied for, uh, something similar, oh, about a, over a year ago. Um, I don't think it happened in January, though. There's a property you have in mind and you can give me the information.
Uh, it was, uh.
Mike.
Rezoning a district.
Mike, I think they also, Mr. Gallo also presented at a work session of ours last winter.
Right, uh, one of my former colleagues presented on that, the North Park Overlake District, I believe, in January.
Right, I, I was just con- concerned is, are we doing one-offs like President Bendo said, or are we just going, is it going to be more down the road?
What do you mean by one-off? I'm sorry.
Well.
What does John mean by one-off?
You know, like, one here, one property there, one property there, and then it just continues to just change the entire area after, over time.
I understand. Um, I mean, listen, I can only speak to the, to the legal factors that are required, right, so it's pretty hard to get a use variance, because you have to satisfy all the factors. Uh, the question will be whether or not they satisfy those factors. Um, and I can't really tell you how the board's going to vote, because I don't know, um, but it's, it's something I'm going to, uh, you know, our office is going to go through with them as far as the statutory factors, we're going to go over the presentation and, uh, you know, give legal advice and.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Rich, I just want to take a moment to, uh, I attended that five-and-a-half-hour meeting, and just to thank you for your dedication to the zoning board as our city's attorney.
Thank you. Thank you. Lots of coffee.
Hope you guys at least took a bathroom break.
Okay.
I believe there were zoning members actually eating their dinner in between, so you make it work.
One of the other questions was brought up, uh, last week about, from Mr. Roy Lester, about the Pride Festival, and so, Rich, you want to give the answer that we have found for his question?
So I know Mr. Lester had asked about, um, I guess what we're planning on doing to recoup the, uh, approximately $75,000 from Pride. Honestly, until Mr. Lester mentioned that question, I hadn't had it on my radar, so I started to look into it. I don't have enough to intelligibly speak as to what strategy we would employ or what the pros and cons are, um, but I have begun the, uh, the search for all the relevant documents and, uh, and hope to have an update for everyone at some point soon.
Okay, and, um, is that it for you, Rich?
Um, yes, unless the council has anything else for me at this point.
And since we're on Mr. Lester, he did ask about, uh, he had another question about FEMA. Um, we are look, we are still looking into that question, Roy, so we will get back to you, and then we will get back to the council as a whole and the public, because I said that any question that was asked during any of these meetings that we did not answer, we would come to the next session and we would answer those questions. So on that note, um, Mr. Fabrizio, ours, uh, engineer for the city, is going to give an update on our lifeguard station.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? Um, just want to give you a little overview of the comfort stations and lifeguard headquarters. Um, just to give a little history, on October 29th, 2012, eight of the city's comfort stations and lifeguard headquarters were destroyed by Hurricane Sandy. In regard to lifeguard headquarters, I was actually standing on the boardwalk and watching in disbelief as the structure was knocked off its footings at the time, and it careened off the boardwalk and got sucked into the ocean. I probably have one of the last photos of the lifeguard headquarters before it disappeared into the ocean, which I'd be happy to, uh, share with you. Um, now we're here nine years later, and I'm pleased to report that we're in the final stages of completion of replacement of all structures that were destroyed along the ocean front. In 2015, we reconstructed five comfort stations for a total cost of $8,457,260. These were the comfort stations at Riverside, Lincoln, Edwards National, and Grand Boulevard. Um, in 2018, we reconstructed the Minnesota Avenue Comfort Station, which was previously at Virginia, and it cost us $735,000. The final three structures, which includes lifeguard headquarters, were bid out in 2019, um, of which Neptune in New York is complete. The final structure, which is lifeguard headquarters, is being delivered this week. Um, the crane is basically being delivered tomorrow, it's going to be staged and set up, it's very, very large, it's like the only one of its kind in the area, the building's going to arrive tonight and tomorrow, it's basically going to come on four trailers, it's four prefabricated modules that each weighs approximately 100,000 pounds or 50 tons. Um, they're going to set the building on Thursday, which will involve essentially picking the building and hoisting it over the boardwalk, so the boardwalk will be closed between, um, Long Beach Road and Edwards. Um, over the next month, the electrical plumbing and decking around the structure will be installed, it's going to be connected to the Dune Walkover Riverside Boulevard, and the intent is obviously for it to be open for the 2021 summer beach season. Um, the funding for this project was derived primarily through the FEMA Public Assistance Program. The total cost to replace all nine structures, including lifeguard headquarters, was $12,194,260. Uh, the FEMA funding, through the FEMA Public Assistance Program, through the FEMA Public Assistance Program was $9,319,610. So basically, if you deduct those two, um, it basically cost the city approximately $2.8 million, but we did obtain nine new structures, new buildings, um, that are built, you know, obviously at a new height and, uh, you know, uh, much better than what was there before. Um, as far as lifeguard headquarters, the Duke Headquarters is going to be approximately 1,000 square feet, it's going to have locker rooms, it's going to have a chief's office, it's going to have a pull-down staircase that's going to go up to an observation deck, which gives you basically a panoramic view of the entire, uh, beachfront. Um, you'll have that same view from the main floor of the building, which is all glass on the south side as well, so you can also have that, you know, panoramic view for safety, you could see, you know, what's going on on, on the beach. Um, it's going to have a first aid room, it's going to have a bathroom, and it's going to have a communication room. Um, and we're very excited, it's a long time to come, and it's been, it's been a long time, and lifeguards deserve it, the city deserves it, and, um, you'll, you have a chance, I would definitely take a ride down and, uh, check out the crane and the, and the hoisting of it on Thursday. Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry, Mr. Bendo.
No, go ahead, Liz, go ahead.
Um, Joe, the, uh, the boardwalk you said will be closed, it will be closed intermittently during the day, or is it going to be closed for the?
On Thursday, on Thursday, it's going to be closed during the fire day from, from during working hours, um, from probably eight in the morning to five at night. We don't want anybody to run away when they're hoisting, you know, hoisting these 100,000-pound units over the boardwalk. So it'll be closed Thursday, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and, uh, I guess for John, I guess we're, we'll be doing social media posts and stuff to let people know that?
We, we already have been.
Okay.
The only difference was this was originally slated to, the, the lifting was originally slated to take place Wednesday, so we've now updated because the construction schedule got pushed back a day.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions for, uh, Joe? All right, thanks a lot, Joe, appreciate it.
No problem, thank you.
All right, my next speaker is Mr. Sam Pinto.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, great, um, no video option, okay, gets to get my picture. Uh, good evening, everyone, hope everyone is well. Uh, the city manager had asked that I give a brief update on the status of an issue regarding the fire department, uh, that I know is very important to the council and the community. So I'm happy to report that over the last few weeks, the city and the union have reached an agreement in principle to a MOA, memorandum of agreement regarding new terms of employment for future Long Beach professional firefighters. Uh, this agreement's a, an important step in promoting better delivery of public safety at a significantly lower employee cost. Now that these details are worked out, it will facilitate us sending some of the civil service tested candidates to the upcoming New Year's Day Career Fire Academy. Uh, the, the Fire Academy is similar to the Police Academy, uh, it spans over a few months of training, and the program focuses on like science, uh, fire science, codes and regulations, medical care, and other disciplines that are involved in fire prevention and control, life safety and rescue skills. So we're still working on the final language of the agreement, and I can't get into real detail about it until then, um, but I think it would be safe to say that we did memorialize the importance of the recognition of Juneteenth as a holiday, and it will be included in the terms of the agreement. The, uh, negotiations, uh, did they, they went back and forth, uh, but they were healthy, and the results, uh, we believe will be beneficial to efficient delivery of public safety. A lot of hard work went into this, I would like to recognize Donna and Rich Barrios's commitment to working on this, on top of all their other responsibilities. Uh, it's an important step for the city and for the fire department, and I look forward to the recruits completing the academy, uh, ready to serve with pride and professionalism in time for our busy summer season. So it's a quick update on that, um, and I just, I know the council was interested in that.
Great news, good to hear. So, uh, any questions for Sam? All right, seeing none, thanks, Sam.
Thank you, guys, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Sam, um, for last night, I know we were brutal last night going back and forth for a long time, and, um, I look forward to the beginning of May, um, for us to start the negotiations of the contract. Um, the next speaker will be Ron Walsh, Commissioner of Police.
Hi, can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, everybody, um, so I want to bring to attention, uh, some good work done by the police department and give you some updates on some of the other things that have, uh, taken place with regard to, um, the, the police and what's, uh, some things are going on in town. So, uh, one thing I wanted to bring attention on, uh, on, uh, February 19th, at approximately 8:30 in the morning, I was driving to work and I hear a call come over the radio, and it's, uh, Special Police Officer Rodriguez. Uh, he observes a, a van parked in a handicap spot, it's like a, one of the, uh, like an old school bus van type of thing, but in the van, because he, he looks at the van, he sees it in very poor condition, he notices or hears the barking of what sounds like a vicious dog inside, and when he looks through the windows of the van, uh, 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 or sorry, should I say, school bus, uh, he sees that there's a lot of crates in the, in the, uh, in the, in the, in the, in the school bus. So, um, he hears this dog, the dog sounds like it's distressed, uh, he calls for a police officer to come down, he asks for the animal control officer to come down, uh, animal control officer, O'Toole, and sanitation inspector Jacoby also takes a ride down, because he has a lot of expertise in these things as well. They do an evaluation of the condition of the dog and the, in the condition that the van or truck is in, uh, or school bus, actually. I keep on saying that because they call it a van, but it's actually an old school bus that was created into an animal transport vehicle. Uh, it's in very poor condition, sub-freezing temperatures, it's been parked there, the engine compartment is cold, so it's been there for a while, so they decide that they're going to enter the van and take the dog out for, uh, uh, its own well-being. So as this was going on, and I came into the station house, I call, uh, I, I go to the desk officer, the desk officer and I work out to call the Nassau County SPCA, which is the Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals to come down, they have criminal investigators that also get involved, uh, in this. They take the dog out of the crate, and the dog is paralyzed from its waist down, it's in very, very poor condition, um, it has sores all over its legs, uh, it has no control over its bowels or its urinary tract, uh, really, it did not look like it was going to potentially survive. Um, we get involved with the SPCA, the SPCA comes down, the SPCA gets involved with Detective Popper, uh, two detectives from the SPCA comes down, it's, it's a Detective Thompson and Wasserman, they come down, they go down to the van, uh, we decide that we're going to impound the van, the only thing we did when we got into the van was we rescued the animal, and then the presence of mind is there to not go through anything else in the van, we back out of the van, we close the doors, we apply for a search warrant of the van, because all we wanted to do was handle the exigent circumstances of the dog that's in very poor condition. So we do an investigation, the Nassau County, uh, District Attorney's, uh, Animal Crimes Division gets involved, uh, and it turns out that as we're impounding, but before the, the, the impound vehicle shows up to take the, uh, the van away, the owner of the vehicle shows up, that person is brought down to the, uh, uh, police headquarters, interview takes place there, and at the end of the whole thing, through coordination of all of the different, um, agencies involved, we wind up taking the vehicle, getting a search warrant, taking the health certificates for all the animals that were transported, the, the woman who owns the van gets arrested for leaving the dog unattended in the vehicle for approximately seven hours with no heat, heat source, so it's an. seven hours with no heat, heat source. So it's an animal in a vehicle for, uh, uh, in extreme temperatures. Uh, she is also involved in transporting numerous animals to a local animal shelter, not in Long Beach, but lo, uh, close by, which then prompts an investigation into that particular animal shelter because this van is used to bring animals up from Texas to our local area. So there's an ongoing investigation as to the health certificates, but you know, I want to point out that a special police officer who's doing parking enforcement comes across, uh, an animal that's in obvious distress in a, in a, in a, in a van in cold weather and does a fantastic job of rescuing the animal and potentially starting an investigation that could broaden into the, into really providing safety and security for other animals in our community on, on the island. So my compliments go out to, uh, Special Police Officer Rodriguez, uh, the desk officer involved, uh, our detectives, the SPCA for their response, the District Attorney's Office, uh, the United States Department of, uh, Food, Food and Drug Administration. They came down, was they involved? Because it's the interstate transport of animals. A very, a lot of coordination took place here. It's just another example of the great work that the, uh, police department is doing. Um, so before I go on to any, uh, any other part of my report here tonight, does anybody have any questions on that particular instance? Okay, so the next one that I want to bring to our attention is, uh, we've been receiving a lot of complaints in town about, uh, people flying particular banners around town that are, uh, have foul language or what we consider to be foul language. Uh, the police department is very, very aware, aware of these particular, uh, instances around town. And I just wanted to read a little bit of very quick information to the public and to the council, just to give you a little bit of basis here. So, um, Cohen versus California was a case that came out of, uh, the Supreme Court, came out of California. But somebody was actually wearing profane language on their T-shirt when they go into a courthouse. And the United States Supreme Court basically says that while foul language are not words that the general public might use as poetry, right? Uh, but, um, they say that basically one man's vulgarity is another man's lyric. And they, they determine that that type of language is actually protected speech. So as much as it might be offensive to, uh, the, the sensibilities of a lot of people, uh, there's not a lot that the police department or the city can do with regard to the foul language other than appeal to the common sense sensibilities of people and try and get them to cooperate with us as community minded neighbors, if you will. So that, you know, you can get your message. It's not the message, it's the wording that's being used that some people are finding, finding offensive. And, uh, you know, so even though the city doesn't promote the sign or the use of profanity, the Supreme Court has said that that is a type of protected speech in the First Amendment. And regardless of our opinion, the sign has to be recognized as protected speech. So I just wanted to kind of get it out there that we are very well aware of it and we are working towards trying to come to some sort of amicable resolution. But as for the particular wording on a sign, uh, we can't do a lot about that legally. It violates somebody's rights, uh, First Amendment rights, civil rights violation is not really something that the city would want to take on. Uh, because they've already ruled on it and it's not a winner for us. Um, are there any questions, uh, with regard to that from anybody before I move on to my last piece tonight? Okay, so the last piece that I have here tonight is, at long last, on our city's website, our police reform document is up, it is published and it is out there. So if you go on to the Long Beach, uh, the City of Long Beach's website, you go into the departments, you go into the police department, you click on that part of the page, you go to the bottom of the page and you will see links to our police reform plan. Uh, it is a rather lengthy document. Um, it is, I think it's a hundred and thirty some odd pages overall. The portions that we wrote are fifty eight pages long. Uh, I can't thank Rich, uh, DePalmer enough and the members of the police department. You had, you know, Bill Dodge, who worked tirelessly getting us our, uh, graphics together. Uh, we had a tremendous amount of, um, new policies that went out over the last two weeks to get us to the point where we could put this up in good faith, saying that these things are part of our, uh, uh, our process and procedure. Not that they weren't before, but the codification of what's necessary to actually comply with Executive Order two oh three really need to take place. Um, I really want to give a shout out to everybody involved in what was called the Commissioners Board on Police Reform. Uh, these were all very, uh, very interested and dedicated members of our community that worked alongside myself, Inspector DePalmer, the city itself, to really come up with a document that reflects what Long Beach as a city and as a community would like its police department to be doing. So if you can, uh, I beg your indulgence while I just read the names of the people that were involved. I think they deserve proper acknowledgement, even though it hasn't been finally approved by the board. Uh, you have Helen Dorado Alessi for the Long Beach Latino Civic Association. You have Father Brian Barf, who was pastor of Saint Mary of the Isle, Our Lady of Miraculous Metal and Saint Ignatius Churches, Rabbi, uh, Elijah Fink from Temple Zion, Danielle, uh, Grusenmeyer from the Nassau County District Attorney's Office. You have Henry Hall for the North, North Park Crisis Prevention and Post Intervention Team. Rabbi Baruch Kleiman from Temple Zion. You have Joe, Joseph Lee, he's an attorney, uh, and a city resident. John McNally from, uh, the City Manager's Office was a big help. Pastor Mark Moses, he's the pastor at the New Life Church of Christ, disciples of Christ in this, and, and the City of Long Beach Civil Service Commission. He was very, very involved. Uh, Rodney Nellums of, a community member. Jackie Odom, uh, from North Park Crisis Prevention and Post Intervention Team. Daniel Robinson, another one of our Nassau County District Attorney's Office. Uh, Marcus Tinker from the North Park Crisis Prevention and Post Intervention Team. Uh, myself, Inspector DePalma, uh, and, uh, Bill Dodge were all worked our butts off to get this together. Uh, we feel that we've really come up with something that, um, we'll do Long Beach proud. It is a great commitment to the city, uh, to do this. Uh, there's a lot of things in there, uh, which we're going to hold a special meeting, uh, of the council with the council's approval next week. Uh, right now it's up. We're going to get feedback. We've established a special, uh, uh, email box that shows up directly on my email and, uh, Rich DePalmer's so that we can go through any, any feedback that the community gives us. And if it fits within this, in the, in the, uh, in, in the, uh, document, we'll incorporate those suggestions into the document for community in general input. But, uh, we're very proud of the document. It's, it's going to be a lot of work to meet it and to, to be able to implement it. But, um, I, 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 and I know that every one of the council members, the public should know that this document was given to the council members a few weeks ago. They read through it. I got a lot of feedback from them. Everything that was asked that we could incorporate was put into the, um, into the document. The city manager gave, we'll get final product next week, make a recommendation to the board for, uh, this to be approved by the city council. Once that takes place, we come up with a communication letter to the New York State Director of Budget and this goes upstate for them to have our plan. I'm done. Any questions?
I have no questions. I know a lot of work went into that document and I, I appreciate everyone's assistance making that happen.
Yes, indeed.
Um, Commissioner, I just want to, you know, thank you, thank the members and, and the list of people, a diverse group of people that I'm, I'm sure, um, my personal opinion is having the group together and weighing in gives a large represented, representation of what the community policing, I guess, uh, needs and desires and, but just the dialogue, just the communication is excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, um, we just, um, one more and then myself, Mr. McNally.
Evening all. I will, uh, I will keep it brief, uh, in way of COVID update. So for the seven day period ending yesterday, there was one hundred and five new positive test results in the city. That averages out to fifteen a day or point four five, uh, per one thousand per day. Uh, again, these are way down from what we, you know, was commonly referred to as the holiday peak, but still very concerning numbers and roughly equivalent of where we were during the peak last spring. So we're, we're, we're almost exactly one year out, um, from the, the onset of this pandemic. Um, and we're kind of right back where we were. Uh, there's better, better therapeutics, obviously, better treatment. Hospital systems are in pretty good shape at this stage of the game. Uh, and of course, the vaccine is there. The, the big news on that front is Johnson and Johnson vaccine was approved over the weekend. Um, and President Biden today announced that he anticipates the vaccine being available to, uh, every resident of the United States by the end of May. So there is some hope there, uh, for folks looking to get appointments that we are still at a point where the demand greatly outweighs the supply, but for folks looking to get an appointment, stay patient, keep trying. The New York State hotline number is eight three three six nine seven forty eight twenty nine. And Nassau County's website for their sites is NassauCountyNY.gov slash vaccine. So that's our, uh, biweekly COVID update. Just two other quick updates, um, as the council, I think, is aware, well, certainly are aware that Judy Vining has been calling for an update to the social host law, uh, to include marijuana. Uh, the council, it looks like should anticipate having a notice of a public hearing, uh, at the next council meeting, so on the sixteenth. Then last but not least, uh, we will have recycle bins, uh, for sale at cost to our residents, no later than Monday. Um, we're just finalizing a few procedural things on our end, uh, but the bins are in, they are the same exact specs as the blue bins that everybody has now, except for they are hunter green. They will be available for sale for fifteen dollars each at our, uh, tax department's office, the third floor of City Hall, again, no later than Monday. Uh, but we'll be making announcement in all the usual ways, uh, if we can get it out the door prior to that. That is it, unless there are any questions.
Tomorrow is recycling for?
Tomorrow is recycling for commingled, more commonly known as plastic glass and metal.
Thank you.
If you're, if you're my house, it's commonly referred to as the big pile in the basement, whatever is down there.
Are there any other questions? Uh, okay, so lastly, I want to thank, uh, MLK Inc. On Friday, they had their soft reopening. Um, and, uh, President Bendo, Commissioner Walsh and, uh, Monique Powell and I attended. And they surprised me with the wall, um, honoring Black History Month. And so I want to, uh, tell them thank you very much. I was quite surprised, but I did appreciate that. I also want to thank Commissioner Miranda and Ina Resnick, our comptroller, um, for all of the hard work that they put in on helping us, uh, with the memorandum of agreement for the fire department. Um, we still have some work to do, but I just want to make sure that you know that I, I, I thank you. Um, also on Tuesdays from two to four, we have, uh, meet with the city manager virtually. Um, I want to thank, we had a full, uh, agenda today or a full slate of people that met with the city manager today. And I think it went very well. So if anyone is interested, please, um, sign up. You can go on the website and it will tell you how you can set up an appointment. Um, the last thing is we are definitely in budget season. We are trying, we are working very hard to complete the budget for upcoming, uh, year, July first through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty two. And also, um, we are preparing the five year multi-year plan. I want to say thank you for Mindy because she read that entire document for me to, for grammatical, uh, information. And so we're moving, uh, it's moving quite along. So we will be coming to you all, um, soon. Um, to ask any additional que, ask if you have any additional questions and we will be moving forward from that. And then the very last thing is that we know we have some charter changes that need to be made, um, especially from some of the reports that we received, uh, within the last year or so. And we will be bringing that forth, um, for April so that we can publish for the hearing and then we can also, um, uh, go ahead and hold a meeting about those charter changes. So are there any questions for me thus far? Well, that ends the city manager's report.
Great. Thank you so much, Donna. And, uh, Dave, why don't we move on to the, uh, the agenda and the public hearing?
Okay, so our first public hearing, or only public hearing, is for the purpose of providing all persons and representatives of organizations with significant social, economic and environmental interests an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on, on and proposed activities for the city's community development program for the two thousand twenty one, twenty two's forty seventh year.
Okay, great. And I see Monique has joined us. So, uh, Monique, you, you have any, um, anything you're gonna, you'd like to say before we, uh, start the hearing?
No.
Okay. So, uh, who do we got, Dave?
Right now I have, I have no hands raised.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, wait.
Oh, no, okay.
As soon as I said that, we have two hands up.
Okay.
Hang on, uh, Mac Graham.
Okay, from MLK. Hi, Mac.
Hey, what's going on? Sorry about that. And obviously I can't, um, put my camera on, but good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Um, again, my name is Mac Graham. I'm the newest executive director at the MLK Center. And, um, right, as you may know, the MLK Center, we offer community based educational, recreational and human services programming to help our community, um, overcome adversity. And today we're requesting support for our enrichment programming in the amount of two thousand, um, twenty five hundred dollars. Um, or twenty five thousand dollars, I'm sorry. Um, as you may know, like COVID nineteen has had a detrimental effect on many of our residents, specifically, um, the black and brown residents here in the North Park area. Uh, many of our residents has lost employment and need financial assistance or need assistance with, um, finding employment. Um, it has also had a deteriorating effect on, on many of our folks' financial and, not financial, um, physical and mental health. And it has also had a detrimental effect on many of our students' academic ability. So, um, with your su- support, we are looking to enhance our wraparound services around education and human services. Um, with the, with the new building, um, occupancy, um, social med, social distance and protocol, uh, we will need increased staffing hours, which to meet the needs of each participant coming in at different hours. We'd also need, uh, financial support for virtual and hybrid programming to meet our students' and families' needs virtually. Um, programming particularly around education, financial literacy and mental health. And then we will, and we also just need, um, financial assistance for cleaning supplies and technical, technical support assistance. Um, this year we're looking to, um, do a community assessment, evaluate the data and then implement the adequate services needed to provide, um, resources to our community. And, um, I think that's about it, all I have today, but thank you again for having me.
Okay, great. Thanks for the input, Mac. Okay, all right, Dave, who's next?
Next is James Hodge.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Hodge.
Thank you, uh, welcome. Thank all of you. I just wanted to reiterate, uh, as the chairperson of the board and board member, reiterate, uh, and support what our executive director is saying that on this hearing, we want to make it, uh, you know, clear that, again, we appreciate the city for what they do through community development, uh, as we are in the city's budget, I think at zero point zero three percent. Uh, uh, that the city contributes through community development for gas and electric. And we appreciate that. We're asking for, uh, the city of Long Beach, as Mac said, to help contribute with, uh, funds for programming so that we will be able to meet the needs of the community as we continue to do need assessments and do the programs that we do. It was wonderful to have, uh, the city here, the commissioner and the city manager. And again, just to see that we were already filled at capacity on one side and that wasn't even, we didn't even promote a time. Uh, that was just a little word of mouth, just by a few kids. And so, uh, again, we do need support. Uh, we are one city and, uh, sometimes in different areas, there is just less fortunate that need a little bit more assistance. And we are here to help, uh, everyone and do. And we are here to help everyone and do what we can to be that stellar organization that we have been in the city of Long Beach since nineteen sixty-eight. So again, we're here to request the city's help in the area of community development funds to be contributed to the MLK Center. And also, that community development take a look at the building, because it do have leaks that the city has already paid to fix. And I don't think that they probably would have to pay more. I think they just have to get the company that already did the work, because that it's structural and it's from the roof. So would love that to be addressed through community development, as everything else is in this building is pretty much taken care of through the community development. That's all I really have to say about our community development.
Okay, thanks, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for stopping by on Friday.
My pleasure. All right, Dave, do we have anyone else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, any questions from the council? Because I didn't ask that in the beginning. Okay, seeing none.
Question, but I, I do want to thank Monique for all of her super hard work on this. It was a lot. And thank you, Monique.
Thank you. Can I just add on that this is the, there will be more transparency when it comes to the community development and CDBG. And I encourage the public or anyone else that is interested or want to know more information to visit our website. Thank you to Carrie Anne Troy and Tracy Murray, who has been helping me to be more transparent and provide upcoming information that is very valuable to our community and everyone else about what we're doing with community development. So further questions and information can be sought out through the website, which is our longbeachinyline.gov, and go under community development. And with that, my updates will be up there. I'm also mirroring what the wonderful city manager is doing. It's having virtual chat and choose with myself about the needs of the community and their interest in community development. So starting tomorrow, everyone can go online and see the information, and we can take it from there.
Okay, great. Thanks, Monique. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's close that hearing and move on to the agenda.
Okay, we're on to the regular calendar. Again, noting items six and seven have been removed from the calendar. Item one is approval of minutes from prior meeting, December eighteenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will.
Second?
Will.
Thank you. Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Troston?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay, item two, resolution, is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the county of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended, and Title Two of the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, forty-seventh year. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase sodium hypochlorite from the lowest responsible bidder.
I'm gonna assume that's Joe again?
Yes. Joe is three, four, and five.
Okay.
The purpose of this bid was to obtain sodium hypochlorite for the water pollution control plant. Basically, sodium hypochlorite was utilized for disinfection of the sewage, of sewage in the treatment process. There were four bids received. The low bidder was JCI Jones at ninety-five cents per gallon. The second bidder was PVS at a dollar five per gallon. Twin County Pools was third at a dollar twenty-nine per gallon. And Kuhn was the fourth bidder at a dollar fifty per gallon. The city utilizes approximately seventy thousand gallons per year of sodium hypochlorite. The previous vendor was Twin County Pools at ninety-eight cents a gallon. So this is a three percent, not three percent, three cent, I'm sorry, three cent reduction from the previous horse per gallon. And funding is available in their operating budget for this purchase.
Okay, I just got one clarification, Joe. Seventy thousand, just roughly seventy thousand gallons a year at ninety-five cents a gallon is, is sixty-six thousand five hundred. But the resolution says there's twelve thousand available in the account. I assume that twelve thousand is just for the remainder of fiscal year? Okay.
Correct. That's remainder of the year. That's why they have seventy thousand for, for the, oh, yes, that's just for the remainder.
For the remainder of the year, and then next year, it'll be the, the full, full amount. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Any from the public, Dave?
Yes, Roy Lester.
Okay, hi, Roy.
Go ahead, go ahead, Roy.
Hello, John. Yeah, this is basically chlorine in our water, and, you know, it's something that's always a concern. And especially since we had the, the crisis back in June of two thousand nineteen. And we never really quite figured out what caused the E. coli and the coliform in it, but, you know, we do have to have chlorine. And the problem with chlorine and, and
Roy, can I just interrupt you for a second? Because this is for wastewater. This isn't for the potable water system or the water treatment plant. This is to basically treat, to disinfect the sewage in the wastewater plant, the sodium hypochlorite. It's totally different than the chlorine at the water treatment plant.
We don't use sodium hypochlorite for the
No, this is, this is a different process. It's a different process at the, the next agenda item is for chemicals for the water treatment plant. It's probably more applicable to what you were starting to say.
Okay, then I'll wait for the next one.
You might want to wait till the next one.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I apologize.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll talk to you on the next one, Roy. Anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, let's move on to item four then.
Okay, item number four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals on an as-needed basis for the water purification plant from the lowest responsible bidders.
Yeah, the purpose of these bids was to obtain aluminum sulfate, sulfate liquid and hydrated lime for treatment processes at the water treatment plant. The aluminum sulfate liquid is utilized in the open air basins at the facility of the plant to facilitate iron to settle out. You know, the water that we get from the Lloyd is iron-rich, so it's used in the process to make it settle out. The hydrated lime is utilized to increase the pH of the water. There were two bids received for each chemical. The low bid for the aluminum sulfate liquid was Chemtrade Chemicals at a dollar three per gallon. The previous supplier was Thatcher at a dollar five per gallon. So it's a two percent reduction from what we were previously paying. And it's approximately forty-five thousand gallons used annually of that, of the aluminum sulfate. As far as the low bid on the hydrated lime was Graymont at two hundred and eight dollars per ton. The previous supplier was Calmu Lime at two ten per ton. So there's a two-dollar reduction in that cost. And we use approximately a hundred tons a year of that chemical. So I know it doesn't mention chlorine specifically. That's another chemical used in the process. But Roy, I apologize, I interrupted you before. If you want to continue regarding your question or comment, this would probably be a good time, because it's related to the water treatment plant.
All right. All right, are you done, Joe?
I'm done. Yes, thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions from the council members?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank Joe for being able to, when he opens a bids, to do that on YouTube for the public to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's great. We're going, the price that what we're paying is going down. That's actually good. That's a good thing. So, nice job. All right, seeing no other questions from the council, Dave? What do we got? I assume Roy's coming back? Yep, there he is.
Roy, go ahead.
Let me unmute. Okay, I have several questions quickly. We put a lot of chemicals in our water. And our water is hard, no question about it. I question our, our reports, because our calcium hardness goes up to thirty-two point seven milligrams per liter, microgram per liter. And yet, our total hardness is only five point two to eight point nine milligrams per liter, which doesn't make sense how the total could be less than a part. I also, the copper and the lead hasn't been tested since two thousand seventeen. And it was rescheduled to be tested in twenty twenty, and I don't see that it was retested. And I guess the part that bothers me the most is the chlorine, the sodium hypochlorite that we use. The chlorine, of course, it's a caustic chemical, and, you know, it's, but it's necessary because it kills things. But we, a byproduct of that is what's called a trihalomethane. And the trihalomethane that we have is four hundred percent higher than what it is in Point Lookout. And trihalomethane, there's no question, it's carcinogenic. Of course, you know, you can't avoid carcinogens. I'm not saying that. But it, I guess what I would like is that some, at some point, have you been hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, at some point, if we could have a, some sort of a seminar on this or something, because water quality is a big issue. Carcinogenic water is always bad, and they do say that this particular chemical causes bladder cancers and kidney cancers and stuff like that. And, you know, I know we're nowhere near the absolute total limit and stuff like that. But I think it's something that the public would like to know about. And if Donna could arrange for, you know, some sort of education on this, where we could actually ask questions, it would be good. Joe, I don't know if you have an answer on that.
Yeah, I would suggest a conversation even with the health department. We could probably get them involved as well. And possibly we could reach out. I know with COVID, everything's virtual. But I'm, I mean, I'm adverse to it. And possibly even one of our consulting firms. We work with H2M Lab, we work with a couple other, the Verkan Bartolucci. I mean, I'm adverse to some sort of forum to discuss it more at this point, like some sort of Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
At all, so.
Do you have a, is that total hardness just an error? Or is there an explanation for it?
Joe?
John, yeah?
Yeah, the reason, the fact that our calcium hardness is, we have a calcium hardness that's higher is because we use hydrated lime to raise the pH, which is actually, as compared to the Tannen hemsted, they use caustic soda. And the benefits to using hydrated lime is that it's very difficult to drive the pH into a dangerous level. Because if you overhydrate with lime, it will settle out in the mains, as opposed to if you overhydrate with caustic soda, you will, you could cause severe burns on people. So using hydrated lime is a much safer process.
No, no, Joe, the question was, how can the total hardness be less than a part of the hardness?
Because the hard, calcium hardness is calculated different than total hardness. Our water is very soft here, and that's one of the reasons we raise the pH. And when, when our pH naturally in the water is about four point two to four point five, when you join up, when we add the hydrated lime, we bring the pH up to just under eight.
Okay, and do you know if we were, if we retested for the lead and the copper?
We test the lead and copper on our cycle as required, and we have very good results.
No, no, I'm sorry. Was it retested in twenty twenty? I know we, we tested in two thousand seventeen. But it was rescheduled for twenty twenty.
Yes, it was tested in twenty twenty. Those results will come out in the, in the twenty twenty water quality report that we put out each year.
Okay. Do you know when that comes out? Just out of curiosity?
You know, I, I think it's in the, it's in process. We have a certain date it has to be out by. I will follow up with the date when it comes out. I'll see if they get a copy.
All right, thanks so much.
Roy, this is Donna. So I will meet with Mr. Fabrizio and Commissioner Morando, and we will put on a learn, maybe a learn session for everyone that is in the public, who may not understood what you all were talking about, so that they can be educated and brought up to speed. We'll post it on our website, and we will let people know at the next meeting when that will be.
Thanks so much, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you done? I assume, you done, Roy? Okay, I'm gonna assume so. Dave?
Yes, I'm
Okay. Dave, anyone else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, let's move on to item five.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the complete reconstruction of Boyd Street north of East Pine Street with the lowest responsible bidder.
All right, I'm gonna assume that's Joe again? Joe, you're muted, so if you're talking, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Again, on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, three bids were received for the reconstruction of Boyd Street north of Pine. The low bidder was Thomas Nivelli Contracting Corp. at eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty dollars. There were two other bids. One was Macedo Contracting Services, and the third was Allen Industries. Thomas Nivelli, they're an extremely reputable contractor that has done several projects in the city. Most recently, they completed the emergency sewer collapse on Lyndon Walnut, as well as Pacific Boulevard reconstruction between Broadway and Walnut. In regards to Boyd Street, it's arguably one of the worst roads in Long Beach, that's for sure. As part of this project, we're replacing the sidewalks, the driveway, brings the curbs. We're going to be replacing the old sixteen-inch diameter cast iron water main with a new eight-inch water main and associated copper services with new hydrants as well. There's going to be a new LED decorative streetlights, very similar to what's on Pacific Boulevard and Forester. They're what they call post-top luminaires. They're twelve-foot-high decorative LED lights, roughly a hundred feet on center. And of course, we're going to have a newly paved road when it's all said and done. That's going to be well pitched and well drained to a new drainage system at the dead end and also at Pine Street. I just wanted to note that this was designed in-house by our staff. You know, a lot of work was into doing one of these roads in-house. We're probably one of the few communities that actually still does it. You know, it basically includes doing a complete topographical survey of the roadway. You know, I have to draw it up with my team here in Public Works on AutoCAD. We had to send it to the health department to get approval for the water mains. So I just want to thank, you know, the staff that we have here, you know, John, Connor, Brooke Anderson, Chandra, Christine, Rita, Billy Martone. I mean, you know, we have a really small staff, and I really appreciate it. They really work hard. And, you know, probably saves the city forty to fifty thousand dollars by designing one of these roads in-house. But, but anyway, you know, funding is available in the capital budget for this project, and I definitely recommend a warning. It's Thomas Nivelli Contracting. They're one of the better, probably one of the best contractors that we deal with, so. And we have funding in our capital budgets for it.
Okay, any questions for Joe?
No, just thank you again for saving us money.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, good point. Okay, seeing nothing else from the council. Dave, anything from the public, anyone from the public?
Nope, nothing from the public.
Okay, well, I think we all agree that repaving streets and upgrading our infrastructure is a good thing. So let's move on to item six. I'm sorry, six and seven have been removed.
Six and seven have been taken off the calendar. We're going to go to item eight, which is a resolution authorizing a correction of error appearing on the two thousand nineteen, twenty assessment tax rolls for the city of Long Beach.
And that's Mr. Fleming from the Tax Assessment Office.
Hi, Ray.
Ray, go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. This is a legal procedure to accept the retroactive tax exemption, exemption application and cancel the taxes for the nineteen twenty tax year for Temple Bethel, now known as New Bethel. They were merged. The, the properties were being uninhabitable by the building department back in two thousand eighteen. Their organization pretty much didn't exist, so no one filed an application, and the properties weren't being used for an exempt status. So I was unable to approve any application or make it exempt for that year. Once the tax bills were issued, Rabbi Goodman informed me that he was in the process of merging with Temple Bethel. And he requested from our state representative's legislation to allow us to accept this retroactive application. This cancels twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents of taxes for the nineteen twenty tax year. The city council passed a resolution back in December of nineteen, authorizing the acting city manager at the time to issue a city manager at the time to issue a letter of support for this retroactive tax exemption. And that pretty much covers everything.
Any questions from the council members?
I just have one question of Ray. Does that, do you know if that affects our budget for this year?
That would have been in the reconciliation of the end of the year for 1920.
Okay.
You know, could probably answer that question better than me.
Okay.
You know, there was a shortfall in collection of taxes. I informed the Tax Department at the time that Rabbi Goodman came to me and went to the state that the taxes eventually would be canceled. COVID delayed this process a few months.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Ray.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
I believe Ina is on to answer.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah. Just answer the question.
Yes. Good evening. How are you, everyone? Just wanted to let you know that this amount was written off in fiscal year 2020, as I was aware, became aware through the documentation that I received from the Office of the Tax Receiver that this property is not going to be subject to the lien sale.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes. Ina, does that mean going forward, we will not collect any taxes, property taxes on this property?
I think that's the question for Ray, actually.
Yes. Moving forward, as long as they file tax exemption applications and use the property or have a plan to use the property for a tax exempt purpose, it will be exempt.
So is it, is there a certain timeframe in which you have to actually execute your exempt purpose?
There's a lot of key slowness, and generally, as long as they have a plan in place, it's pretty much goes to the property or the exempted.
So the institution. So. So they could have a plan in five years from now to make the property for a non-exempt purpose?
Yeah, but the plan, they would have to have building plans, they'd have to have the board directors approving something, there would have to be some sort of official plan, not just saying, I'm gonna build a new synagogue or church. They have to have concrete plans to move forward.
To retain tax exempt status.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none, Dave? Do we have any from the public?
No hands are raised.
Okay, then let's move on to item nine.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing the approval of a list of eligible volunteer firefighters for the 2020 Length of Service Awards Program, LOSAP Service Credit.
Okay, and I see our fire commissioner is on, so John, you gonna address this at all, or you got anything to say?
Sure. Volunteer firefighters in the City of Long Beach who have at least one year of service partake in what's known as the Length of Service Award Program, which provides a defined benefit pension to them at the age of 65. Each year firefighters are awarded points based on the number of fire calls that they respond to, the number of rescue calls they respond to, training events they attend, drills attended, standbys, or if they hold certain elected positions, meetings attended, and other miscellaneous work details. And some, if on military leave, right now we don't have any, would get credit. The monthly payout at age 65 is based on the following. For each year that a firefighter obtains at least 50 points, he or she would receive a $20 a month pension starting at age 65. The total monthly payout is capped at $400 or 20 years of obtaining required points. This year, we had a total of 82 firefighters qualified. That doesn't mean some firefighters did qualify and have enough points, however, they have already aged out or have already obtained their 20 years. So now what'll happen is once the council approves this, this information, based on the age of the people that are eligible, will go to our actuary, and the actuary will determine, based on the present funding of the program, if we have to add any additional funds to, to support the program going forward. And that's basically it, unless somebody has a question.
Mike, I know you got a question.
Well, I just want to thank Commissioner Morando, and I, I know he thoroughly explained there were some members that exceeded the 50 points, but those that are listed on this resolution, I've checked, as my council liaison to the Fire Department responsibility is, and thank you all for allowing me that opportunity. But I think it's a great program, and it's, they're, as far as I understand, everybody who responds to a call is, I believe, a thumb reader, so there's no, you know, signing sheets or things like that. And I'm very proud of the volunteer fire department and all of the volunteers throughout the city. And thank you again.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from the council? All right.
Just another thank you to everyone that provides this volunteer service.
Yeah, we got 80 people who dedicate a lot of time to this, to keeping us safe, so they deserve our gratitude. But, all right, I guess I'm gonna say, don't see any others. So Dave, any questions from the public?
Yes, James Hodge.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank all of the volunteer firemen that risked their lives. They don't get paid to do it, and, you know, I thank God for firemen all over the world, but I thank God for these special firemen here in Long Beach that volunteered to do what they can to help save lives and, you know, help our city from Nevada to Maple, from the bay to the ocean, and this whole Barry Island, and they respond even out of town and cover other fire departments and help them in different levels of fire. So again, whatever we can do to assist them and help them for their contributions and what they do, which is a, you know, just a really amazing job, going to the trainings and, you know, doing what they do. I just wanted to add on, I appreciate them, and thank God for them, and I ask that God just keep them safe from all harm and hurt and unseen danger. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, James.
This is Karen. I just want to clarify that I'd like to thank the firemen and the firewomen that serve this city as volunteers equally.
Yes, all of them.
The firefighters.
Yeah, the firefighters, because there are women.
That's right.
The volunteer, yes.
There are. Absolutely.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that was all.
Okay, let's move on to item 10.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
That would be Ina. You're unmute, Ina, if you're talking.
I'm sorry, say it again, please, Donna.
Item number 10, the resolution.
Item number 10 resolution is for the transfer from the contingency to the Fire Department Equipment Repair Line.
No, 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 that's item 11. Item 10 is to pay DynTech Services.
Right.
IT.
Sorry, item number 10, you're absolutely right, also, transfer from the Information Technology Machinery Equipment Line to the Information Technology Contracted Services Line, $3,700. It pertains to the services and Davis and a father at the meeting, so he can correct me if I'm wrong. It has to do with the work of the consultants who helped us, who helped us with the cybersecurity work back in December and January. And the Department of Information Technology has some funds remaining in the machinery and equipment line, about $25,000 if I'm not mistaken. So they had asked me to transfer this money to the contracted services line. This way, we can pick consultants out of the correct line.
Okay, good, great. Any questions from the council? I think it's pretty straightforward. All right, Dave, any questions from the public?
Roy Lester.
Okay.
Hi, again, this was when we were hacked, right? And Ron Walsh kind of saved the day?
Yes.
Yeah. Who, I mean, normally, we have some sort of cybersecurity that we pay for, I'm sure, that, you know, standard. Why could we not have relied on them, or did we not have that service at the time? Or, you know, I mean, I thank God Ron was around, but, you know, just that we had to pay extra. Normally, this is something that would be covered by your IT group or whoever's handling your IT. Can you just explain that one?
I'm not quite sure. There is no IT group, really, it was just Dave and Jamie. At that particular time, the city did not carry cybersecurity insurance. The very first quote that we received to help us was $250,000.
They were scamming you.
So Commissioner Walsh called some people he knew in Nassau County, and we made some phone calls, and Dyna Tech came in and they helped us, and they only charged us, it was gonna be at the highest $11,000. And so bill comes in at 3,700, and yes, we do have insurance now.
Ah, that's great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John, I actually had a question about this.
Okay.
I was looking for a firmer date on when we're gonna receive a security report as a result of Dyna Tech's work or someone else's work about a security assessment.
We met with the whole team last Friday, so within two weeks, we should have the written report.
So then I feel comfortable approving this. Thank you.
Anyone else, Dave, from the public?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, let's move on to item 11.
And item 11 is also a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
All right.
Okay, Ina, this is for the fire truck. You still on mute, Ina?
Sorry. Okay, so this transfer is needed because we have a fire truck that needs repair. I believe it was explained to me that it has something to do with the ladder on the fire truck, and we, obviously, with a lot of high-rise buildings in the city, we definitely need to have this fire truck fixed sooner rather than later. So we are asking city council to authorize this transfer from the contingency account to the Fire Department Equipment Repair Account in amount of $14,910. That was already, this is based on the quote that the city received from the third body that assessed the damage and the cost of repair.
Any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Any from the public, Dave?
Nope, none at this time.
Okay, then let's move on to the voting.
On to the voting. Okay, so we'll start with item number two, which is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the County of Nassau for the purpose of undertaking a community development program, under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended for inclusion in the city's community development program for the 2021-2022 47th year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase sodium hypochloride from the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Before I vote, I just want to thank Joe, your entire department, John Morando, for your work on this item, as well as items four and five. I won't be redundant and go through those each time, but thank you very much, and great cost savings as well. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase various chemicals on an as-needed basis for the water purification plant for the lowest responsible bidders. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will. Oh, okay.
President Bendo.
Okay, second?
I will.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the complete reconstruction of Boyd Street north of East Pine Street with the lowest responsible bidder. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Looking forward to the project, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes, I just want to make sure that, Joe, you get the latest version of AutoCAD. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing a correction of error appearing in the 2019-20 assessment tax rolls of the City of Long Beach. Would you, would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, and item nine is a resolution authorizing the approval of a list of eligible volunteer firefighters for the 2020 Length of Service Award Program, LOSAP Service Credit. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Before I vote, I want to thank all of our volunteer firefighters, especially this crew, because it's actually those who earned at least 50 points. So that means that's the bare minimum, and a lot of these people probably even exceeded that. So thanks to all of our volunteer firefighters, and especially this group of individuals. I vote yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Ken, thank you very much. I vote yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Councilman Dell said it well. Thank you, and yes.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Walsh and all the members that helped, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
I echo those sentiments. I vote yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item 11 is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Will make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes. Okay, on to good and welfare. You get three minutes of time to talk about what you'd like, and who do we have first?
First up, Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy, you should be unmuted. Go ahead, Roy, you should be unmuted.
Okay, I guess I have three questions. Can we get an update on the jetties? The rapidly disappearing jetties and the people that were taking care of it? Also, on the recycled bins, can we arrange for some sort of delivery to people? Maybe if they pay $3 or $4 and get it dropped off at their house? Because that's really a burden for a lot of people to get to City Hall during the day and get it. And I'm sure there are a lot of kids that would go out there and deliver these things for $3 or $4. So I think we could probably arrange that. And finally, can we allow people to ask questions on the department reports? The department reports, something that Donna has brought in, and they're really great. They give a lot of information. But with information comes questions. So if we could ask questions on that information, it would be really nice. Thanks. Under three minutes.
Hey.
You're under one minute.
All right, thanks, Roy. Let's see. I see Joe's not on anymore. John, you have any update on the jetties that you might know of?
Yes, they will continue to inspect them on an annual basis. So they've done one annual inspection. After the fifth annual inspection, they'll actually do a survey of not only the jetties, but the location of sand and how the sand has shifted and moved. I wouldn't expect any help from the Army Corps on doing anything different with those jetties until at least the end of the five years, which will be in about another four years. And just as a reminder, as of this date, we have, as a city, have not accepted the jetties. So.
I also wanted to point out that we just voted on at the last meeting or the meeting before to extend the coastal engineering contract to analyze and continue to report on the status of the jetties. So we're, so they're on top of it. That's the latest update.
Right, and those people represent the city. That's coastal planning engineers.
And Commissioner, this is Mike Delory. Wouldn't the request eventually get funneled up to our federal representatives?
We've copied, we've copied the federal representatives on every report that we've had done by coastal planning and in addition, internal memorandums that Joe and I prepared.
Great, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, and then I guess on the delivery to bins, I guess the staff can take that back and consider that as a potential option.
Yes.
As well as asking questions on the department reports, if there's a way to do that, maybe.
Yes, we'll take that under advisement.
Okay.
When the first recycle bins came out, we did, the city did that. You could pick it up at West School. You could pick it up at different parts of the city.
Yeah, and then we may be able to do like they do with the parking passes, have evening hours or something like that. So people could come, you know, after working hours and things like that. So there's things to certainly consider. So, all right, who's next, Dave?
But wait, Joe Fabrizio is on and he had his hand up for something.
Oh, sorry.
Did you have a comment?
Got you.
You know what, John pretty much covered it very well. So I'm still here, but good job, John.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, who's next, Dave?
Next is Judy Vining.
All right, hi, Judy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for being the amended social host on for hearing for next time. It was, had a conversation with Arielle, which was a pleasure this morning because I don't know if you know, but pre-COVID, we always had a representative from the Corporation Council as well as the DA's office to meetings. So I didn't have to like explain it all to Rich because he knew, because he was part of it. So this kind of puts the punctuation on something that we started in the state. So that's really good for Long Beach and good for our community.
Judy, you're breaking up a little bit. So I don't know if it's slowing down or speaking more directly into the phone.
Okay, we'll try. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better.
This has been all day since the wind. So anyway, again, thank you to Rich for understanding and doing it. And thank you guys. The other, as long as we're on the top of the marijuana, you know that the governor is full speed behind his proposal. What I wanted to point out to you guys, aside from the kind of information I know I sent you for your reading pleasure, is that this thing for us is that for cities under $100,000, there is no option to opt out. So you might want to consider, as a council, asking for the same privilege that the city of Yonkers has and writing, you know, a letter or contacting the governor and Speaker and the Majority Leader of the Senate, as well as our local officials, so that we can fairly protect our citizens. And given that, that's why I sent you what was local ordinances that can be initiated by a local community. We're not able to opt out. And so there are things that have worked. For example, in California, one out of five, I think, cities have opted out of selling, of having stores and extended the distance between advertising and adding houses of worship and daycare centers and all that, which are not in the governor's proposal. So that we have at least a little more protective space around our kids. So those are just things that, you know, to consider. That was in the packet that I sent you from Sam, which is a pretty solid research tank in terms of what works and what doesn't work and how to get around certain things when you have a totally preemptive state. Because that is the governor's proposal. It will be part of the SLA. And we all do know how difficult that is to work with sometimes. So that's all I wanted to put before you. And thank you again for the hearing and for closing that loophole.
Okay, great, thanks, Judy. All right, who's next, Dave?
Next is Eileen Hessian.
All right, hi, Eileen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. I would like to thank Councilwoman Trustin for following up on something I asked her about. I was getting texts, emails, and phone calls from PSENG about their home serve service about sewer lines to the street. And they sort of threatened that if, oh, if you didn't pay the $4 a month and something happened, it would cost thousands of dollars. So I asked her to look into it, and she did. So it seems like what they would charge is $4 a month, less than Brady. And it seems almost as if they are the same thing. So I'm wondering if the city knows anything about this? If we should sign up for it with PSENG? If it's a scam, whatever? Anybody know anything?
Eileen, this is Liz. I spoke with Commissioner May this, late this afternoon. He is the Commissioner from Nassau County for Consumer Affairs regarding your concern that this letter, that I'm assuming most of us have received, it's from, it looks like it's from PSENG. But it's a company that is, PSENG worry-free. So you really have to look at the fine print. It's, he's going to look into it to make sure that PSENG is still okay with them using their name as far as whether or not this, I'm going to request in an email tomorrow that the staff look into it as we have, God bless you, we have Brady Risk in our, in our warder bill already that people don't sign up for a service that they already have. That would be something for them to look at. But again, it happened after business hours today. So I will follow up with that tomorrow.
So. Thank you very much, Liz.
This is Donna, Eileen. I have a copy of the letter that was given to me after business hours. So we will follow up with it because in the letter, it says that the customers of PSENG Long Island have no obligation. And it is not the same company as PSENG Long Island. So we will look into this to see about this vendor. And then we will let everybody know.
Thank you very much. I think everyone got this letter and they kind of threatened, if you didn't buy it, this would happen. So I appreciate your work on this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Eileen. Anyone else, Dave?
Yes, next is James Hodge.
Okay, welcome back, James.
James, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, it's good to be back to also to hear about the Section 524 on the Code of Ordinance Untended Animals. That was a section that I got put in Long Beach, thanks to Corey Klein at the time, and I was animal warden. But I also want to speak about also the, I heard you guys speak about the affordable housing that's being put in Long Beach. And I think that if you guys get the details of this plan, people that speak about gentrification don't know the details of this plan. This is, North Park is an opportunity zone. These investors are looking to come in and buy these homes, which they have done. And if they're not put into two-family homes, they would have to rent them at a rate that is unaffordable and that will virtually make them, make it where it will gentify the neighborhood. If they're not, what they're looking to do is make them two-family homes and the rate of HUD, whatever HUD going rate is. And the attorney know that all of you guys need to get the package. Look at the presentation on the zoning board. It was five hours. This is, I believe, a great deal and a great opportunity for people that are low income and can't afford the $5,000 to live in a one-family home, which these houses could be. But they don't have to do this. Again, Long Beach and North Park area was designated as an opportunity zone. They came in to invest. And I'll say this quick piece is that when I was younger and I was in school, and I said this on the zoning board, right? When I was getting free lunch, I had a big yellow card and I used to have to stand on the other side of the cafeteria. And it was two lines. All of the people with free lunch, I had to have a yellow card to get points. All of the other people stared on the other side because they had money. I felt horrible because everybody knew that I got free lunch and that my father and mother probably was poor. These houses don't depict that you're poor. It puts everybody on the same line. And I'm grateful that these owners are looking to come and give these nice, beautiful homes and make them accessible and affordable where they don't have to. And so if all of you get the plan, it's not gentrification. I've seen gentrification. Where Walbonds is, I've seen my family and friends get kicked out of there on Chester Street. That was gentrification. That's the 99-year deal that was signed in 1983. So, or 102 across the street from City Hall, where that building burnt down and all of those families got kicked out of there and extended care. So these six houses will do nothing but help this neighborhood. When you get the plan and you see it, you will be able to see how they will help. And they will increase the opportunity for the houses and the properties to go up in more taxes to come into the city of Long Beach. More of a tax base so that we can have in our city is good. And of course, the city needs more of a tax base to be able so they don't have to raise taxes or raise user fees. So again, please look at what an opportunity zone is. Please look at what these investors are doing in coming in, which they didn't have to, and making these homes affordable because they, they want to, not that they have to. So again.
James, that's your time.
Okay, they're putting this in the same line and saying, we want to give you an opportunity to live like everybody else around Long Beach in something beautiful and nice.
Okay, thanks for the information, James.
Thank you.
All right, who's next, Dave?
That's it.
Okay, well, thanks for joining us, folks. And we should be having a working meeting on next Thursday. So for those of you that are gonna join us for that, we will see you then. Hope everyone has a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, thanks, Dave.
Have a good night, everyone.